I'm always here.
Where you been all day?
Oh, boy.
It's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. We're going to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act as an expenditure, so I will put it under two.
I'm sorry, Donna. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we have the presentation. Okay, um, whoops. As you all know, we've been expecting money from the federal government for COVID. It is the American Rescue Plan Act. Had been told that we were supposed to get four point five million. We're actually going to be getting four point nine million. So every penny counts. Fifty percent of this is due once the state of Oklahoma makes the allocation. The remaining portion is due a year from now, and they'll send it to us then. Uh, one of the, what we're going to talk about is all of the eligible projects that we can do with this money. So Arnold is going to talk about, uh, this is some of the things that are eligible water and sewer infrastructure, broadband infrastructure, support of public health response, replace public sector revenue loss, address negative economic impact, which we did not have, uh, premium pay for essential workers. See if they have any questions on any of that. Okay? Yes. I'm gonna bring, uh, Arnold Adams up here, Public Works Director. He's going to talk about the water line replacement.
Okay, so I was asked to put together a little presentation on what infrastructure that we needed to replace, water sewer wastewater plant, maybe a water plant, arsenic removal. So in the city of Yukon, and this number changes daily, we have eight thousand five hundred and sixty-four service connections, one point two million feet of water line, which is two hundred and twenty miles. Out of that eighty-nine thousand feet is transmission line, or what we refer to as the well line. And of that line, ten percent of that is in between zero to ten years old, seventy percent is eleven to twenty-five years old, and twenty percent is twenty-six to fifty years old. We have one point one million feet of distribution line. So again, twenty percent is about zero to ten years old, fifty percent is eleven to twenty-five, and twenty percent is twenty-six to fifty years old. So out of that list, if, if I had to pick a number to replace, that what needs replaced right now would, would be forty-eight million dollars. And so what we value that at right now would be somewhere around two hundred and forty-seven million dollars worth of water lines that we have in the ground. And so obviously, we knew we couldn't spend almost forty-nine million dollars right now, so we put together a critical list. These are areas that we've had, like you'll see, the first one is a twelve inch water line that runs up and down lake shore. We have averaged three to five leaks a year on that line. And I'm, I don't prob, I can, but I won't go down through the whole list, but it's here. So out of this list, we estimate, and this does not include engineering costs, or if something was to happen, we'd have to acquire right away. This is just to replace the line. And this number changes daily because if we had to replace some of this now, I don't even know if we could get pipe because contractors are telling us another plant went down in Louisiana, so even getting the pipe. But a twelve inch would cost a hundred and ten dollars a foot, eight inch ninety-eight dollars a foot. And the twenty-four inch of the well line, we estimate would cost around a hundred and fifty dollars a foot to replace that. So here's just a map. We put this map together. The blue is water. Green lines are sewer lines that are needing of replacement. So we kind of shot some pictures. This is that third and birch used to, a couple of years ago, there was another hydrant here. So in these areas, we have four active water lines. So we need to replace these and kill out the old water lines. So we had a leak and we took one out, but there used to be four there. Then we just have some pictures, like on the left is that eighth and Elm. Eight inch sewer line that we, I mean water line, that we had broke, no valves to kill it, so the guys had to fix it live. Picture on the right is a leak we actually had about two weeks ago on the well line. Again, both of these are on the well line repairs that we've made over the years. That picture on the right is actually our well line down in a creek. Uh, Oklahoma City was removing some trees and caused that one. Picture on the left is that Highway Four in Ash. And the picture on the right is just south of town on the well line. So we will look at sewer lines. So we have eight hundred and forty-seven thousand feet of sewer line, which is roughly a hundred and sixty miles. Of that, eight hundred and, roughly eight hundred twenty-nine thousand feet is gravity, which is just gravity flow, no pumps. And there again, twenty percent is zero to ten years old, forty percent eleven to twenty-five years old, thirty-five percent is twenty-six to fifty years old. And we have eighteen thousand, roughly eighteen thousand five hundred feet of force main, which comes from the lift stations to where it will gravity flow. Cost of needed replacement in sewer line projects, I estimate it's seventy-eight million dollars. And it has a value of roughly two hundred and eleven million. And once again, we made a, this is the list of projects that we know. Uh, one of these, we can take off the list that we did three hundred West Platte last week, so. There's quite a bit. Some of these are projects that are needed at the wastewater treatment plant. Like you see the sluice gates, corn building. And once again, we estimated a hundred and ten dollars a foot. And I think that number could change, once again, could change daily, and that did not include engineering costs, or if we had to acquire any right away. And then once again, that's the same map, just the green is the sewer line projects that we need. So here's just the pictures. This picture on the right is a picture of, uh, eight inch poly, the line that you guys approved just two weeks ago. This is what we pull in. They call it pipe bursting. This is the kind of material that they pull in. The bottom picture is just a, uh, eight inch sewer repair. You can see the clay pipe on each side. So it was damaged, so we replaced that in the middle with a piece of PVC. This is some of the pipe bursting projects. Well, the one on the left is. You can see some of the areas, they have to get in these backyards and turn down fences and trees and landscaping. And the picture on the right is a sewer line crossing off of Kova. This is some sewer projects we had to do off Tenth and Main Street, behind the motels there. You see, we had to cut the street. So it's very expensive. The picture on the left is actually the pipe bursting project on West Platte. This is where they dug their tail ditch to pull the pipe. Picture don't look that deep, but it's over eighteen foot deep. From the top of that manhole, you can see at the top of the ditch there to the bottom. And then on the right side was a, a force main repair that we've done. And people's gonna say, well, that's a blue pipe. It's a force main, so we're using water pipe to put that back together. Once again, some more pictures of the pipe bursting. We'll go to lift stations. As everyone knows, we have, in some areas in town, most of our sewer lines are all gravity flow, but there is some low-lying areas that require a lift station to pump it up, where it will gravity flow to the plant. We actually have ten lifts, no, actually eleven. We have a new one at Taylor Park. So we have eleven lift stations that each have two pumps. And they're working pretty, each one of them has a generator, as you can see on the left. This is just a picture taken inside the top of the ground at a lift station. I believe this one's the Von Amm. So don't get too gross. If you see this, this is looking down into the wet well. You can see the slides over on the left. There's two pumps that slide down those. They go all the way to the bottom. That's just the control panel on the right. Just another picture down inside. So takes us to the wastewater treatment plant. So right now, our plant is permitted capacity of three million gallons per day. Our engineers tell us that we need to get to five million pretty quick. We're gonna be in trouble. Estimated cost to make those repair is around six million dollars. And here's some of the modifications that they say we need to evaluate. Putting some new screw pumps to be able to pump five, uh, five million gallons a day. Upgrade the aeration piping and diffusers. I believe if I'm correct, there's twenty-eight hundred. Is that right, Joe? Diffusers down in. The aeration tank, so that will be quite the project. We need to upgrade and replace our blowers. And upgrade the final clarifier splitter box to allow use of all three of our final clarifiers. Complete the replacement of clarifier equipment in one of the clarifiers. Improve aeration in the sludge digester. Improvements to the final affluent discharge. Add some pumps and wet weather flows. Regrade and reboil the flow equalization ponds and some instrumentation and standby generators. Sorry. And this is the clarifier on the left. In the picture in the right, you can see we have the big one on the bottom. The two other, the one in the middle is not even usable at this point, so we need to upgrade that and get it back. At this point, I think it's Mitch Orks.
I have a question.
Yes?
I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody, but in the last fifty years, don't we give you enough money to upgrade this stuff? Or are they saying that the city council has not programmed money enough to upgrade these things as they should be upgraded? In our federal government, when I was a manager there, we had X amount of dollars coming in to upgrade all our stuff so that we would not have one year that we would be focused and be bankrupt. So i- is there, is there our problem that we've not given you the money to do your job?
To be honest, yes, sir.
That's what I was praying for. So in the past twenty, thirty years, we don't allow enough money to go to these offices to do their job. Now we're, it's like bankrupt now. Well, you have to raise your taxes to pay for what you got. Either you have a poly a lot here, or you have a there. You want it down here nationally, we don't have to collect any taxes. And I've already told a lot of people, don't pressure twice if it doesn't work the first time. So hey, well, thank you. I, I just want to make that really clear to everybody.
And one thing about all these projects, I don't mean to interrupt.
It's not this council that didn't give you the money. We're right now being told about this issue, and now we're going to have to respond.
And these jobs aren't pretty. Most of these jobs, you, you have to dig a hole to see the pipe, and so it's a lot easier to go build something that everybody can see and be happy.
You're not turned on.
I, I have a, I have a question for you, something that stood out to me there on the picture where the guys are repairing the li, a live line without valves upstream. Is this, is that a, a normal thing? Did, was there bad planning seventy years ago? What, how does something like that?
Well, I think a combination of both. A little bit of bad planning, and then most of the pipes that we have in that area is fifty years old. So there's valves in place, but they don't work anymore. They're broke.
Okay, so I, I guess what it triggered my mind to think of is, are we not only talking about repairing and replacing, but revamping an entire system?
Yes, yes. We have some plans. We've done some things in the past, added some valving, and, but we need some more. Like in this area, we didn't realize they were broke until we got there.
Okay.
So. And we have put some valves in place that we, we can isolate that now, but we didn't know, and when you're out, we actually worked on that until about four o'clock in the morning before we got that and put back together.
See, I, I just want to make sure the city residents realize this council here is being presented a problem that has been ongoing, that has not been addressed in the past. And that's what I, I want to make sure everybody out there understands. Right now, the mayor and this council has to come up with the money to solve your problem, the city's problem, which has been ongoing for the last twenty years, because you have to allow enough money into your office to upgrade things as things get older. And I'm looking at these numbers, and I can't believe that we haven't done some of that work already. And I appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Have you asked for the money over the last twenty years, and we've, in the council, I say we, has the council just said no? Or is it, hasn't been a concern, there's been other concerns that have been bigger?
I believe that is correct. It has been presented. Not all of these numbers, I'm not one hundred percent certain, but I believe it has been presented, but I believe there was, at the time, other things that were more important. And some of the point that you made, I believe, well, it's been several months ago, is sometimes, or I, I don't remember who made the, but sometimes you can let them build all this, keep building newer stuff, but at some point, you have to take care of what you got.
Right.
Before
Absolutely.
it slips away.
And remember, a few years ago, we were in dire straits financially because of former city manager. And we're building back up to that. A few years ago, we could barely make payroll. And so.
But that's a small picture in the, if we're talking in a twenty, twenty-year or thirty-year.
Yeah, this could be a long.
But some of the problems you didn't know existed until you had a problem, right?
Right.
It's like something happened.
Some of these came over.
Yeah, and then you realized that there was a real problem.
Yes.
Well, that's a lot of work that needs to be done. Thank you for doing all that research for us and figuring out. Four point nine million sounds like a lot of money until you get those numbers.
Right.
And then it's a drop in the bucket.
Tammy asked for a simple list, and it didn't take very long to get up to about eleven minutes. Well, you can just slow down now. That's, that's, that'll be efficient for now.
Right.
All right. Mr. Horford, please.
This keeps coming up about arsenic, so we figured we'd cover it several ways. Uh, Mustang kind of gave us this idea. This is what they're doing to several wells. Uh, basically, um, the water wells has arsenic in the background, and each individual well, we require some type of separate unit. Uh, the estimated cost of each well, and this is just an estimate, is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, it may be more than that, depending on the, uh, amount of arsenic in the well.
Per well or total?
Each well.
How many wells?
There's actually fifteen, but out of the fifteen, four would need it if we're doing Oklahoma City purchase of water. Uh, the annual maintenance cost of each unit's about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, like I said, currently, we have four wells that we really don't use. Uh, well, number four is about sixty-seven parts per billion in arsenic. The others are around fifteen to twenty parts per billion. Uh, the wells that we currently run, we're running, you know, sixty percent Oklahoma City water, forty percent our water to uh, dilute that down to where it's less than the maximum allowed, ten parts per billion. Of course, we know the future may bring, uh, a more reduction of that. Uh, but with Mustang and their pilot program, they're trying to get it down to zero. And that's just the arsenic treatment. Uh, as you can see, the units that Mustang are using are similar to this. This is something similar to what we'd be talking about. The issues that we would have at some of the well locations or on the airport property, we don't believe that we have enough lease space to install that, and actually, we need to be installed in some type of structure. Uh, the vessels with the material that would be in it would have to be serviced, so it'd be pretty tight. But like I said, it keeps coming up, so we wanted to talk about that and let you know that we are and have looked at all of our options to see what we can do. Uh, Arnold's gonna talk about the treatment plant that was discussed going together with, uh, Mustang, so that's gonna be the next subject he's gonna talk about here. But if you have any questions, like I said, we're just letting you know we are looking at all of our options.
I have some questions on your slide. Uh, you showed six hundred and fifty thousand per y, well, is that per year?
That is the one-time cost of the units for that well.
And then it's a hundred thousand a year?
Per well, per unit.
So when you figure all that out versus what we should have done two or three years ago, putting a filtration unit in, I'm, I'm wondering, are we moving in the right direction yet?
Well, uh, as you remember, Arnold talked about this several months ago. We talked about the payback on this. It takes twenty years to pay that back. At the end of that twenty years, it breaks even. So I don't know if that's a really a return on our investment, and that's at today's dollars, of course. And we don't know, you know, if one unit's gonna work, because you actually have to run a water test on it and make sure that that unit can remove all that arsenic.
But it is working in Mustang so far?
They're experimenting. I think that they've got one that's working that, but we have not been able to go down and visit with them and actually go out and look at it because we wanted to see their data, to see how that was working, their pilot program. Of course, it's a pilot. We don't know what the long term of that is and how often they have to change out the material in the vessels.
Were they able to get any ma, extra money from someplace to pay for that?
I think they're just taking out their general fund to do that, or their capital fund. Yes, sir?
I just want to remind everybody on the council here that a couple of years ago, we spent X number of thousands of dollars to Garver to tell us what we should be doing, and yet we haven't done it yet, so I really want everyone to be thinking about those things. I don't like to see tax dollars going to waste, so if we're going to pay another contractor to tell us again what we should be doing, that, that wasting more of our money.
Thank you.
All right. Arnold, are you ready?
Yes, sir. So once again, when we've, we've talked about building a water plant, and that has came from the Calwer board, Garver did the study. We have a plan in place, just like Mustang, to, we could put two vessels like this at each well. Or if you want to talk about building a water plant, and this would just be to remove arsenic at this time. I know in the, in the future, there's gonna be some other, we'd have to remove, there's some other things that we would have to remove, but as of right now, the cost just to can build, to build a plant that would look similar to this right here, you see the two vessels that Mitch talked about, obviously, it would be more. Uh, that cost would be around seven million dollars, just, and you know, there's been talk from the Calwer, the Garver study, that we did, partnered with Mustang, and that whole, that would be twenty, twenty-eight million. But just if we wanted to go out and build a plant that looks similar to this, would be seven million dollars. In addition, we would have to, I think, in, in my opinion, we would have to acquire some more water rights. We'd have to go out and lease some more land on the thoughts of reducing the Oklahoma City water. If that was the vision, I believe we would have to go and acquire some water rights more than what we have to bring it into a plant like this. Also, we'd have to purchase wherever, we're gonna have to purchase some land that would, I don't know how big this would be, probably three acres, maybe, Joe? You have any idea what it would take to build?
I'd have to look at it.
So probably three to five acres we'd have to acquire somewhere, and obviously, we'd want that close to our well line.
And Garver told us to do it between Mustang and Newcastle.
Mustang does not, Mustang does not want to be involved.
Correct.
Is there any discussion with other cities around us? Is there any county money, or is there any state money that we could?
I believe there, I believe there is some funds that may be available, maybe some county money and some money from the Water Resource Board.
I was gonna say, they said that there was money available for us to do that when we ran our last Calwer meeting. Uh, and then the county has twenty-eight million that they're getting for their, uh, airport funds. Um, and they said that, you know, we could ask for some of that.
Is, what's the annual maintenance on, on that plant, counting manpower? Do we know?
We do. Garver gave us those numbers. I do not have them with me. I believe the final product, if we built that, uh, it would take probably a year to get that built. The end product, that, they say that it would cost us to buy the water from that plant would be around three dollars to three dollars and fifty cents per thousand to purchase the water from that plant. So obviously, we would have to hire somebody to run the plant, probably four to five guys besides that. And I'm, I'm sitting here trying to remember the number, but I cannot remember the number.
So these would be city employees or, or contracted service company?
Well, they could be either. The city could decide to run the plant themselves, or like we have Viola that runs our wastewater plant. In my opinion, that would be the best. Any given day, and you, I hate to say this on camera, but DQ could show up and slap us with a seven, eight million dollar fine and say, you have to do this. With Viola being there, that kind of puts a little bear between us and the... But those things, I don't know that any of those things have been really looked at too much, on who would actually run the plant.
So we don't know if there's land available on the current wells to build the smaller treatment plant?
To my knowledge, nobody has looked to see if there's actual space, no.
So I guess we, we would just need to look at like a thirty-year, thirty, forty-year return to see if it, which one pays for itself in the most efficient manner. Is there any way to combine that, a new arsenic treatment plant with other things that that facility's currently doing? I mean, can you lighten the load on the other treatment facility with a new facility? I mean, if I understand right, what we're talking about is basically an arsenic treatment plant?
Yes.
Is there any way to lighten the load off another plant, the current plant?
Are you talking about each, the, the unit one or the?
No, if we get the, yeah, the, the single larger plant.
Well, that's the sewer plant, and this would be a water plant. So they're two separate.
Right, but I'm just in the big picture, like manpower, flow rates, any of that kind of stuff, piping, you know, any of that.
Well, the.
I guess I'm saying there's a way to work the whole system together without.
The pil, the program that Mitch talked about is one individual well.
You talking about taking the four and do one, or are you?
No, I, I'm sorry, I'm not articulating very well. Um.
The, the current plant we have is a wastewater.
Right, right, right. Well, I think what I'm trying to ask, and I'm not being very articulate, so apologize, is how much more pressure on, so let me say it differently. How much more pressure on our current system would that put if we add this larger arsenic treatment plant, as far as, uh, additional lines and, and, and pipe and all that? That's really what I was.
I don't believe it would require that much. We have, we have a lot of water that we don't use right now. So I believe we could take the excess water that we have from all fifteen wells and build the plant and use just that water. But if we had visions to really, in the future, get, I'm not ever gonna say get rid of Oklahoma City water. I don't believe I'd ever speak that, but maybe to reduce that by sixty, seventy percent, then we would have to go out and get some more water right now.
Yeah, that's really what I was asking, so.
Okay, sorry.
I wasn't very articulate.
That's all right. Which is gonna be more cost-effective in the long run, the arsenic removal units or the water treatment, the new, to remove the arsenic? That's all right. Which is going to be more cost effective in the long run, the arsenic removal units or the water treatment to remove the arsenic?
Well, I believe, just if you wanted to say just one arsenic, then I don't believe.
No, no, having the four units.
Maybe did four. I still believe the plant would be the best. So in the future that we could go out and have some water that we could say is ours. There is some communities around that have some excess water rights that they're not using. I believe that are available. So if that was an avenue that we wanted to go down, somebody needs to go get with that community like about a year and a half ago. But it's still available to my knowledge. I believe Mitch has come up one more time to talk about smart meters.
Okay, one of the things that we best asked for in the past and been asked for in the past is smart meters. There's actually two different systems, an AMR and an AMI. The AMR is an automatic meter reading system and the other one, AMI is an advanced meter infrastructure. Uh, basically, we've been asked about, uh, the ability for the customers to be able to look at their water meter readings. Uh, be able to go into the system and look at it as well as, um, leak detection, you know, if you've got a leak in the house, it will tell that. Uh, real time reading, water, water loss analysis. Uh, enhanced meter reading efficiency, streaming, lining, billing process, improving customer service. Uh, basically, we have a, an estimate that we've got some time back that we wanted to kind of show you what the system would cost. Uh, the total system price, you know, by the time we add the meters and the coders and all the fittings and stuff and the hardware and software, we're right at about four million dollars. This one is one that the data collections would be on the water tower and actually collect the data from the meters. There is some of the meters that would be in the dark area, which would require multiple meters that were designed to provide that information to where it could get to the sender of the, uh, and get back to the software or the hardware. It's something like I said, we've been asked for before. Uh, like I said, it's real time. It can be set up that way. It water loss. Uh, we'll know exactly how much somebody is using and when they're using it. So when we get the calls, well, I didn't use that. Well, we can tell them between three and five o'clock in the morning, they use the most water because their irrigation system was coming on. Or if they have a water leak in the house, it will tell us that there's a lot of water going into the house. So it does provide and is capable of providing a lot of information. Uh, like I said, it's something that we've been asked for many times by customers because they like to be able to go in and see where they're at and how much water they're using. It kind of works as an efficiency type deal as well. They can kind of see, you know, how much water they're using.
But if our water and sewer lines collapse, there's no need for those meters.
No, no, but this is one thing we've been asked for many times over the years. So we're bringing you everything that we can think of that's been asked, so you know.
Any questions about that?
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, just want to go over all of the eligible projects that we have proposed to the city council. Um, the water line replacement, the sewer line replacement, the sewer lift stations, the wastewater treatment plant, all of the improvements there to upgrade that to a five, uh, million gallons per day. Uh, a water treatment system and smart meters. The water treatment system includes the, uh, units like Mustang is doing as well as the treatment plant. And then the smart meters. We would also like to, um, our, our first priority is to replace the water and sewer lines because we feel like that is the most important thing and this is a once in a lifetime uh, offer to get this money. Um, so we would like to, to use it to do, um, what we feel is most important. Um, but it is your decision on what you would like to spend it on. We spoke earlier about the state having money and the county is going to get the money. They're getting approximately, I think it's twenty-eight point nine million. Um, we have already talked to them about requesting some of their funds because they really don't have anything that they could spend it on. So they, um, said it took them a while to decide whether or not they were even going to apply for the funds. Um, but the money was going to be given out regardless. So, um, they've had several requests and, uh, one of them was from us, um, to see if we could get a portion of their, their funds. The state is also getting some money and we would like to apply, um, for those funds. We don't know for sure what, how much is going to be available. Uh, but if we have to, we would be able to give a match. If it's a grant and there's a match, we would like to do that. Um, but like I said, our first priority is the water and sewer lines. Um, all of the costs that we, um, presented tonight, uh, are all estimates. So with the price of things right now, um, it's crazy what things are costing and it changes from day to day. So, um, everything that we mentioned is just an estimate. Uh, we also have not added any professional services to any of this. And there, uh, will be some engineering costs, so, um, but that, none of that has been added.
That's all I have.
The hard part is we don't know how much we'll get from the county.
Right.
Plan. We don't know how much we'll get from the state and we don't know how much we'll get in grants. So it's hard to plan out what you want to do, but I think, you know, in my view, we've got to do something about the water lines and sewer lines.
Is there a timeline on the state and county funds? I mean, do we have it?
Yes, uh, I believe by twenty twenty-six, where's Philip? Is that correct? Twenty, twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty? Okay. You know, the, the sewer line break that we just had a couple of weeks ago on Platt was a perfect example of do we just wait until something breaks? The next time it may be more than thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars. Um, all of our infrastructure is old.
Well, knowing that we can get some county money and state money and that, um, the Water Resource Board has some money available.
Till, to borrow.
To borrow.
Yes.
That the water treatment then could be out of that with the water line, sewer line being our utmost important thing at this point. What do you guys think? Is that your high priority?
Sure, I mean, we, we've, the, I think we're at a critical moment. I think we are.
Beyond.
We're, yeah, we're beyond that critical moment that probably happened about twenty-five or thirty years ago. Um, and we've got to do, we've got to fix it.
Just not fix the problem today, but in ten years, we're going to have another problem. So you have to have money coming in every year to take care of the problems.
And that's what we're looking, and that's what we're looking at later on with a tax increase or a GO bond. Um, but that's not for a while yet, but this would be able to fix that sewer and water line problem.
Some of them, yes.
Yeah, not all of them. Mr. Wooden, do you have any comments?
We've got our, we've got ourselves in a pickle. So we've got a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed and we got to plan ahead too, so. Best of luck.
Donna? Do you have any comments?
No.
So that's all I have this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. It was very interesting. Again, we have to look forward, not backwards, because that's all we can do. We can't change the past, but hopefully with this gift that we're getting, we can go forward and make a big dent in this. Okay, we're going to recess until seven o'clock.